August 21st study session and we have decided that we need to indicate who, what council members are here, so the city clerk has asked me to announce that the record reflects that the full council is present tonight. With that, we'll start out with citizen comment on agenda items and we don't have any tonight. So let's move to item number one, which is the staff report.
No staff reports.
No staff reports?
We'll move right to the cultural commission.
You guys are going to be right up here. We're going to have a procession, excuse me, a report from the cultural commission on the cultural vision for our city.
You can sit here.
Diane, would you like to sit here and use our microphone? And you might mention who you have with you tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity of sharing with you this evening. I am Diane Robb, Chair of the Cultural Commission, and we have a number of cultural commissioners present as well. Sandy from District Four, Carol from District Four, and Jarrett Gronski from District Three. I might also make note that Jarrett usually heads up the cultural vision meetings. It is the goal of the Cultural Commission to create a cultural vision for this beautiful city we live in, and we have been working diligently on this task. The summary report has been included in your package, which includes the participants, the reasons it is necessary, and the first steps in creating this document. I won't bore you with all the reading of it because you've already been presented with it. A cultural vision will provide consistent, cogent talking points for our group and other stakeholders, including elected officials and city management, when talking with Wheat Ridge residents and potential residents, developers, visitors, and businesses about the cultural offerings and outlook of the city. To provide a little history, the envisioned Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan states a specific goal of promoting and supporting of the arts to improve and enhance the quality of life for area residents, employees, and visitors. We are fortunate to already have a public art management plan that outlines the process of incorporating public art into our community. To quote the plan, "The public art management plan is based on the belief that public art enhances and defines a city's image. Art makes public spaces more welcoming, and it creates a deeper interaction with the environment, the places where individuals work, live, shop, and seek recreation." The cultural vision takes these concepts to the next level. Also, a while back, I received a couple of communications from developers asking for a cultural vision, directions per se, for Wheat Ridge. I had no answer. These developers were interested in working with the city, believe in public art, and incorporating artistic elements into their developments, and were looking for direction. I want to mention that in no way were they asking for any public art monies, just direction. The Cultural Commission has now gone to work. A cultural vision includes more than just the placement of public art. We believe that art and culture should be a common thread that runs through our community, and the survey we completed reaffirms this. This survey is also included in your packet. The cultural vision will in no way state specifically the type of or theme of artwork to be incorporated into our city. An example of an area that does this is Denver West, where all the sculptures are representational Western bronze. Also, another example is Belmar West, where all sculptures are painted whimsical contemporary metal. Wheat Ridge is a very diverse city, and the Cultural Commission embraces this diversity. It is the goal of the Cultural Commission to complete this cultural vision within the next 60 days, at which time we will be presenting a resolution to the city council to officially adopt. We welcome all input and comments as we move forward to make arts and culture forefront in every and all aspects of our fabulous city. Any comments or questions?
Thank you, Diane. That was lovely and inspiring, too. And the questions might be around, although mention is made in here, how you would develop that division and kind of what are possibilities, how the city participated?
We have a number of ideas, and in fact, our file folder of ideas is overflowing right now, and we really have to work at narrowing it down. We have talked about a cultural loop on 38th. We have talked about how do we encourage developers without telling them, okay? That's not our goal. We do not have a percent for artists, and that just is not our goal, even though a number of cities surrounding us do. We talk about, what are some of the other ideas that we?
Would you bring it to the table? Come to the table, so we can speak.
Oh.
Hi, I'm Sandy Nance. We talked about interviewing some of the other cultural activity groups. We're talking about the Historical Society, because history is part of our culture. We're talking about that we got Carnation Festival, Local Works has lots of cultural activities. And one of the things that we talked about was trying to integrate, form some kind of a function.
Oh, you need to speak into it.
Okay. You can pull it forward, yeah.
Oh, there we go. We could form some kind of a... We want to work very closely with all the different, we want to work very closely with all the entities within Wheat Ridge to make sure that arts and culture is just part of the thread of it all. And we want as much cultural influence as possible in our parks and in our cities. And just for an example, Anderson Park, which is, will just be the bellwether of Wheat Ridge, we're all so excited about that, and we would, we want to make sure that artistic elements are part of the design. And we do, we want to work with Local Works and Historic Society and Art League and everyone that we can possibly involve with this.
I see here you need to develop a cultural arts resource inventory and a resource network. Is that partly what you're talking about?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
I can see I've got some council members ready to ask questions.
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
So I noticed in your report that you were talking about like a chalk festival, or you know how they do the street, and I know you brought up the Local Works and that you were possibly going to do it at the Ridge Fest. Is that going to be for this year or next year?
It is this year. We are very excited about it. The young woman that won the Denver Chalk Art Festival in downtown Denver this year happens to be a resident here in Wheat Ridge. We contacted her, and we are so excited. She is bringing in eight to 10 other professional chalk artists. And so they will be working all day long and be finished by 6 o'clock the night of Ridge Fest. And so that will be, that to me is key to what we are trying to accomplish. And not only are we bringing in new and fresh, but utilizing Wheat Ridge artists.
Yeah, I like that idea, and I like that it, you know, would bring in more traffic into also Ridge Fest, because you've got the artists wanting to come see the chalk art, and it's just another feature of the event.
Exactly, yes.
Well, thank you for that hard work.
Thank you. And we're very excited and appreciative of Olivia McLeod, who sent, she is the chalk artist. And when I approached her, she was very excited to move forward with it, and she is the one that is organizing it, and the Cultural Commission is supporting that, yes.
I had Mr. Matthews earlier.
Thank you. By the way, I observed chalk art that we had at the last year's garden tour, and it was outstanding, just outstanding, amazing what they can do on a sidewalk. I used to put in sidewalks, and I guarantee you, I could never make anything look like Are you folks in the loop? We have some new developments going on, and I'm thinking specifically, we have the Corners, we have the G Line, and we have Clear Creek Crossing, and I know some of those are going to have some common areas and some art. Are you guys in the loop with helping us develop some cultural identity with those projects?
The gentleman with the Corners had contacted me, and he was very, very interested in incorporating art or artistic elements into the development. And our last conversation was, when you have a cultural vision, please share it. And so it is our goal to work with all of the entities and to be a resource for them. It is not our goal to tell them, but to be a resource for them, to help them along the process.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I was just going to thank you and congratulate you on this document, because I think this is a great document, and it's very thorough, and yet it's not real long. So I think you guys did a great job with that.
That's a compliment.
That is a compliment, right? At least I didn't demand pictures, you know, so that's, right. I just wanted to say that as far as the goldmine is concerned, you know, that's going to have a thematic, it's going to be very thematic. So that would certainly be something to be aware of when you consider art up there. And I also would like to put in a plug for some historical art. As an example, if you go to Wyoming, or, excuse me, if you go to Arvada, you find that there are pictures of old Arvada in a lot of different places. But in Wheat Ridge, we don't really have that, and I, some of our pictures are at our own Historical Society, but I think the Jefferson County Public Library has a good collection, too. So I just would like to suggest that you somehow incorporate that into your thinking.
Mr. Irvin?
Wyoming, Arvada, same difference. But when we talk about involving entities in Wheat Ridge and including those groups and individuals that are already existing, I'd like to encourage you to also include those individuals that may not necessarily be involved in entities or groups. And I was thinking along the lines of you had mentioned wanting art in the parks, and I'm thinking that currently we do have a lot of art in the park that isn't necessarily structured art, it's more in the form of graffiti. And it is not necessarily to my taste, but it does show artistic promise of our youth that would be more well focused towards a more potentially structured environment or want to, and somehow encourage those endeavors, but in a potentially a more productive way. And as well, the culture that is represented behind some of that may be important to try to encourage as well, not the tagging per se, but there's other elements to that type of art that is a part of Wheat Ridge that we want to also try to, not necessarily push out, because it is somewhat on the fringe.
And the thing with the cultural vision is, it is wide-based, because we want the Historic Society, we want younger people represented, we want professional artists, we want, you know, the whole kit and caboodle, so to speak. And that is where we spoke specifically about, we are not setting out a specific type of artwork that we are going to incorporate throughout the whole city. We are way too diverse to do that, and I don't think the city wants to pigeonhole ourselves like that either.
And while I appreciate art for art's sake, I also would like to see situations where art is also done with a purpose in some way to, for instance, encourage youth in a more productive manner, or in some way try to resolve some of our societal ills or otherwise use the Cultural Commission and the endeavors that you guys are doing to try to address some of those issues. And you can't solve all of our problems, but I think that art has a role to play in that, and it can help in some regards, either to draw attention to some of the issues that we're having, or also help bring into the fold some of those that are potentially on the fringe.
Right. Jarrett has a comment about graffiti. Oh, you're going to make me read this, and I don't have my glasses.
You're going to have to read that.
Okay. Part of the survey that we did, and these are, oh, responses, the impression, one of the responses from the survey, the impression many of us have is that the Cultural Commission is not only a closed community, but out of touch with younger generations and non-traditional art formats. But perhaps a graffiti festival that uses the portable substrates, it just can be auctioned off to raise funds for art programs for our seniors, businesses, and individuals can be that art and display it inside their homes and restaurants. So that was even mentioned, and we are taking all of these comments very seriously from the survey. I think a graffiti festival could be very fun.
Did Zach take that survey?
No, I did not. That was not a, that was not a planted comment by any means, but the idea there is, is that if we can take them away from doing it on our bridges and our sidewalks and our public infrastructure, and give them a more productive way to do it, then it takes them out of the dark and brings them into the light, so to speak.
Yes.
I was just going to say, you can encourage that artistic expression, but just having it directed in a different kind of manner. There's something that's more positive, that really enhances a community versus, you know, bringing it down, so to speak.
Yes.
So, yes, absolutely. That was the whole process. It's about finding a process for everyone that's easy to do business in Wheat Ridge. We welcome artisans, we want them to come here. We'd like it to be easy for them to do that, and we welcome the different expressions that they would bring to the table, because of just who we are as a community. We like that diversity.
Thank you, Commissioner Gronski. Very nice. Here we got a couple cousins over here. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the Cultural Commission for all the work that you guys have put together on this, and I know that you kind of had a couple of starts and stutters, and then were able to finally get that going. So I do appreciate the perseverance to keep it going. What I like a lot about what you guys do is that it's broad in the way that it's not just visual art or sculpture. There's also music there, it could be potentially dance. You guys have done studio tours for the artists, the large amount of artists that we have in Wheat Ridge, and you've also done like Meet the Artist, which you guys did at several different restaurants and stuff. So not only were people able to meet the artists that were from Wheat Ridge, but they were able to enjoy an establishment here in Wheat Ridge. And so I appreciate that you guys are keeping your scope broad, and I'd just like to say keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
What I like, what you're doing, is you're trying to create a sense of place, and that, I think, is very important. We do have a diverse community, and you're being open and embracing of all types of artwork, whatever that might mean. So, great job. Thank you so much for all the effort and the work you're putting into this, and I appreciate it. So, thanks.
Thank you.
If I may ask a question, something in here alluded to the possibility of having, when we review a new project, a new development in the city, quite often we have agencies that refer to whatsoever. Would there be a possibility the council would consider having a portion of that review that the council does as to what, how this could fit into our, what will be our cultural vision, this new project or whatever? So that it's kind of a reminder that it's important to our city to have something like this, which would come up. Now, I realize what you're here for tonight is really input and permission from the Wheat Ridge, the council elected as council to craft this vision, to go forward with it, and might that be a part of it, what I had just mentioned to you?
And it certainly could be. I think we have to be very, very careful that we don't imply that that developer needs to put in public art. But I think if we do it in such a manner that we, we are offering our services as a cultural city, that we are offering our services, we have a public art management plan, if you want to install any public art, or, you know, if you want to bring some public arts into your area, we have the means to walk you through it.
Part of the review process.
Part of the review process, right, right. As my own personal experience, as you all are very aware, my husband is Kevin Robb, and we do a lot of public art, we work a lot with developers, and cities sometimes, and I shouldn't say this, because this is my livelihood, but it's also my experience, cities sometimes get a little too aggressive with saying, there has to be public art, there has to be this, this, this. That's not what we want to do. We want to be welcoming, we want to be assisting them, not telling them, but assisting them. And how we go about doing that, we need to work on that. We want, we want it to be there, but we need to be careful with it, and I think we will be able to find a means that we can accomplish this.
What I'm thinking of is more the, ask the question, is public art, is part of this project? Is this something that you've thought about? By no means did you ever want to force that on any developer. I've been to a couple of meetings where they expressed that very idea, was make it a suggestion, and that it's part of our process, is this, which, as we look at a project, oh, and by the way, they are going to do this amount of public art.
I have to admit, I was very excited when the Corners, we were having a conversation, and I am repeating myself here, but he in no way implied that he expected the city to put forth any monies. He and I were busy brainstorming about different ideas that we could do, and it was more of, he could do this, the city could do this, we would, the Cultural Commission would step in and be the conduit for him to be able to accomplish some of these ideas we were just brainstorming with. And that, I think, is the key to an active, progressive cultural commission, and that is where we are headed.
I'm going to go, you haven't spoken before. Genevieve?
First of all, thank you for everything you've done, and years ago, I was a member of the Cultural Commission when we had no money, and we were sitting there trying to think of what we could do. So you have really accomplished a lot in the last several years, so thank you for that. I do think as a city and as a council, we do need to think about where we want this to go, because it's one thing to say we want something, and it's another thing to put our money where our mouth is. And so if we're going to dedicate to this and say, we want our city to look like this, and that means public art, that might mean performance art, that might mean music in the park, that might mean whatever, then you got to commit to it. You don't see cities like Golden Loveland, you don't see cities like that without some will behind it. So as we move forward into budget, I really want us to consider this as to what we want our city to be like culturally, and they're developing a cultural vision for us, and it is up to us and our citizens to get behind that and say, yes, this is what we want, and we're willing to put resources behind it. And I thank you for putting together the vision, because it does take into account our background as a city, and the people, and who we are becoming. I think it's really important that we support that with not just words. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, it's been covered, so I don't have to repeat the phrase.
Do you have a public art fund, and Mr. Goff?
Yeah, that's a good segue from Genevieve's comments. And just a reminder for the council, and maybe some of the more current council members too, don't realize that several years ago, the city council at that time created a public art fund, and we are contributing dollars into that fund. It's growing, it's starting to grow, which is exciting. We were just looking at it last week, because we have so many large projects coming online, and that's where the funds come from, so we're trying to estimate how much money is going to come into that fund in the next couple of years. Not to get into the weeds too much, but just to explain how the funds come into, the money's come into the fund, we have, so there's either a private development project that, I think it has to be over $100,000. The city puts in 1% of the fees, the fees that we get from a building permit fee and a plan review fee. We take 1% that we get from that project, so that it's not a cost to the developer. The city is taking the fees, 1% of the fees that we get for that project and put it into the public art fund. Then there's also a second tier of funding. If there's any city or state project in an urban renewal area, we, the project has to include 1% for public art, so that also goes into that public art fund. So, and it's, we just kind of read up on it again, so it reminded me that the funds in this, in this budget are specifically for more permanent type of art, fixture art, not more the performance or activities and such, but that's, we have other monies in the budget for that, so I think that's what Ms. Wooden was speaking to. So we'll talk about the public art fund more when we bring the budget to you in a few weeks.
I need a consensus.
I'd like to ask for consensus to ask the Cultural Commission to continue with their good work and come with a cultural vision for the city of Wheat Ridge.
You did a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support, and we look forward to presenting within the next 60 days, because it is our goal to have this totally resolved and moving forward before the end of the year. So, thank you.
Thank you. We vote onto the second item, which is increasing purchasing limits and approval levels.
Well, I apologize that this topic isn't as exciting as art, but an important topic nonetheless. I have Jennifer Nellis with us this evening. She is our purchasing agent, and I believe this is her first time in front of the city council. So be nice to her. So we're here before you this evening with three recommendations, as we've categorized them as such, to really take a look at our, increasing our purchasing limits and approval limits for purchasing and contracting here at the city. On the first page of the memo, we've outlined six key components of why we think this is an important step to take at this point in time. Additionally, we've also outlined the limited staffing that we have in purchasing and contracting. We have Jen, and then we have a .5 FTE, Cindy, and they make up our purchasing division. So hopefully, as you've read through the different metrics that we've incorporated in the memo, and we can certainly dive deeper into the comparative analysis that we included from other neighboring... from other neighboring communities, you can see that we do have a high volume of purchasing here at the city. And we're really looking for ways to streamline and improve our efficiencies, not only for internal customers, but most importantly, for our external customers, our business community. So with that introduction, I'm gonna turn it over to Jen. She's gonna walk you through the three different recommendations. And we think it's probably easiest if we walk through the three recommendations, have her give you an overview, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to express my thoughts about the purchasing limits, the way they've, they've been established. I joined the city in January of 2012, and I do have a background in purchasing. I've worked in other communities, and I also have a certification.
A little closer to the mic.
Okay, I speak softly, I know that.
Yes, you do.
So just with that introduction, I, I don't want this to come off as offhanded or, or not respecting the process or the people who are involved in the process. Purchasing starts with, you know, staff identifying needs years ahead of time and working on that, and I appreciate that, and your approval of budgets. And, you know, it certainly gets going before it comes to me, for sure. So here are three suggestions and recommendations here. One is starting with the purchasing card's single limit. We have close to, I'd say about 150 to 175 users of P cards. And they're not all active users. But right now, we have a limit, a single purchase limit of 3,000. That's not in alignment with our payable process. So people run into a situation where they're purchasing something, they're allowed to make a discretionary purchase up to 5,000, but then they're limited by the P card policy to only pay for something at 3,000. So it creates a scenario where then they have to figure out, you know, putting this through the accounts payable process takes a little longer, it's a little inefficient in that way. It's already a current practice to allow them discretionary purchasing to 5,000. So for me, that seems like a helpful recommendation. It has the potential to also increase our rebate. We get a rebate from Commerce Bank. It's based on a tiered, tiered levels of purchasing volumes and types of purchases. And so we're trying to always figure out, how can we bring more money into the city? And purchasing generally spends money, so I'm trying to be helpful. I do think that, that just that simple step will help some. It may not be significant, but every dollar counts. So that's my first recommendation. And then our, our second amendment is moving into signature approval levels. That's on page three. My suggestions are to allow the department directors a little more discretionary approval for their employees' recommendations and research. So taking a department director from the range of 5,000 up to 15,000, and moving that from 5,000 up to 25,000. And then for the city manager, he currently approves that 15,000 up to 35, where you are currently approving the 35. Suggesting that we take that 25,000 to 100,000. And then for city council to approve the requisitions, the purchases, the formal procurement processes from the current $35,000 level up to 100,000. And I did do a survey, similar to what was done five years ago when purchasing limits were, were discussed, of 17 cities and five counties. And so many of those are in, either in the process of recommending changes or have already made changes, up to, you know, the similar type approach that, that we're suggesting here, which, if you look at the, the chart, the survey results on page four, and then also in attachment four, you'll see that there's quite a few communities, small communities as well as larger ones, that operate with that $100,000 approval level, some being 250,000 or 500,000. And then also some that approve the budget and then don't go back for a discussion or reapproval, if you will, of those purchases as they're solicited and awarded. So, and then if I could move on to amendment three, this one's a little, little more complicated here, but more details. Purchasing acquisition limits. My first recommendation is to combine goods and services. Right now, we separate goods, services, construction, and they all have different minimum discretionary purchase levels, informal quote levels, and then formal bid levels. And from the day I got here, people asked me, "Is that goods or services or construction?" You know, and it was an interesting conversation at times. I think mostly, we've been able to sort that out. But I do think that, that working with goods and services in one category simplifies things for our end users, our other staff members, if you will. And so I'm suggesting that we have discretionary purchases there up to 5,000. That's actually the same at the goods level, it's taking services down just a notch. Informal quotes, in writing, over 5,000 up to 25,000, that would be in alignment with that director approval recommendation. And then formal bids and proposals, the same at 25,000. My next recommendation here is to establish a specific category for professional services. And professional services, it's defined by the federal government in, in a purchasing standard as the Brooks Act. It's limited to architects, landscape architects, surveyors, land surveyors, and engineers. And as we know, all of those people are well-paid. And they've earned, they've earned that. So we currently don't have a specific category for them, so they fall into services. And those services levels had been a little bit low for them. We were running into the fact that, that the Public Works Department is splitting up projects in order to be able to use our on-call engineers. And it's an inefficiency to them, and to the purchasing process, and the approval processes, also to our vendors. And I, I did a recent solicitation where a vendor basically came and had a conversation with me and said, "It's very costly for me to do a response to this solicitation, to put something in writing and package it, and make it pretty, and prepare multiple copies, and go through this process." So it starts out with just qualifications, and then we move into pricing for the project and all of that. So, so this recommendation really is based on working well with our consultants that we have onboard, and then also seeking new ones at a, at a good level for them. So I'm proposing that we increase from 25,000 to 50,000 for the informal quotes, and formal solicitations beginning at 50,000. So the last recommendation in that category is specific to CIP and construction. And I'm proposing that we, we take the informal quote level from our current 25,000 to 50,000, and raise that up to 100,000. So it's a broader range, and then going to formal solicitations beginning at 100,000. So throughout this, I'm trying to create some alignment in where we go formal, and where we have different approvals, and where we make sure that you're seeing the higher dollar, more impactful purchases for the city. And so with that, I am recommending that with your approval of these, that we could take it to council for adoption as resolution. I'm very open to questions and comments.
Just, thanks Jen. Just one quick thing to add to that before there's questions. Just to clarify and to keep in mind that anything that's not budgeted always has to come back to council. So if, even if it's a dollar, if we need to take a dollar out of reserves, it has to come to city council and has to be approved by a resolution. So what Jen spoke about tonight is everything that's already budgeted and then budgeted and approved by council.
Nice job, Jen. Thank you. I'm gonna start out with Ms. Davis.
So I have just a couple of questions. So your P, the P card approval process, how is that handled? Is that handled like through Concur? Or so I have a P card, and I charge things on my P card, then does my supervisor review what I charge on my card? How is that handled?
So possibly in a couple of ways. Each month, every employee's P card use is reviewed, it's reconciled at the department level, possibly by that individual, and possibly by the administrative assistant or some assigned person there. That, so everybody has a report on each charge. And they'll put in the correct G L number that it's charged to, and a description of the purpose of the charge. So we coach them to make a note about, if you have a meeting, how many people were there, what was the purpose? You know, they're, they're, when they receive a card, they learn that there are things they can't purchase with a city purchasing card. For instance, no alcohol, no weapons, no, you know, it seems like common sense, but we do have to go through that with everyone. And then that reconciliation is turned into accounts payable, so it's looked at, at that level. But every month, we receive our statement, and Cindy and I go through an audit each month. It can be kind of a, sometimes random, but basically, we're looking at, does this charge make sense? Does it make sense for the person who has the card? And what department are they purchasing for? Recreation is getting ready to do their big work at the end of the month. They're gonna have some unusual charges, so we're, we're aware of that, we know that, we monitor that. I think, maybe that addresses your question?
Yeah, so the, I guess my question is, is the director of the department, or even if there was a manager, like, say for instance, there's a director of the department, but I'll just use Parks and Recs, and say there was a management of service crew, and then there was a management, management of, you know, park expenses or something, let's just pretend. Now, like, is there an oversight, at least a little bit more oversight in the department, and not just me turning my expenses into you?
Yeah, the supervisor or department director, depending on that. Department directors signs for their direct reports.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So that was, okay, so that was one of my questions. And then I have just a, a quick kind of question slash analogy. So, I mean, a lot of this is gonna be budgeted items, of course, on the expenses. So like, say for instance, I'm gonna just use an example that we always have every year, is like replacement of fleet. So sometimes that runs below the 100,000. And, and a lot of times, it's below the 100,000 per maybe vehicle, sometimes not, sometimes if it's a big old thing, it costs 250,000. But if it's a police car, it costs, you know, a different amount. So is, in that case, so I'm just trying to think of what this looks like in the future. So like, some of that stuff would not be presented because it was already budgeted that, hey, we need three police cars and a front loader, and, you know, those types of things. So that is something that we wouldn't see anymore, is that?
Yeah, true. If it's, if it's below 100,000, based on what we're proposing. But, you know, most of the time with vehicles, we, we don't purchase one vehicle all the time, we, we do a whole lot. So we, you know, we replace three to six police vehicles a year, and we usually, they all come in at the same time, so it's, it's always gonna be over 100,000. But yeah, anything that's under 100,000 and, and already budgeted would not, would not come to city council, based on this proposal.
Okay.
To help me understand a little bit, give me an example of a circumstance in which a $200,000 purchase would need to be purchased on a P card instead of being billed and...
It, it wouldn't. Only the accounts payable department has a specific card that might have a limit high enough to allow them to make a big payment on something. We don't generally have any reason to do that. We, if we have a purchase order, if we have a formal procurement, it ends up with payments made through a check.
Okay, well, let's take 100,000, let's take $99,000 then. What, is it something that is so urgent that it has to have a P card as opposed to going through a regular process? And why can't we be billed and pay with a check as, as per norm?
The P card recommendation is really to only take from 3,000 to 5,000. I'm not suggesting that we make a payment.
Or with approval.
So approval is, from, from my perspective, isn't the same as payment, the payment method. So I would, I would not expect that a $100,000 payment would be made with a P card.
So a P card would be used for sort of an unbudgeted or budgeted incidental kind of purchase?
Usually.
As opposed to being...
Mostly budgeted.
It's always budgeted.
Well, it's always budgeted, but it's...
Always budgeted. Anything under 5,000, that, anything that's under 5,000, that, the vendor accepts a P card. We encourage employees to use their P card. So it, it cuts out the accounting process of cutting the check, and it, it's just quicker for the vendor also.
So that's, it's, that's the reason?
Yeah.
That's the reason.
Well, it, it cuts, it's, it's, yeah, plus we, we get some rebates also.
Right. And we do have maximums on the cards. So we set up, like, if you have a minimum purchase of 3,000, for the standard people across the city, they would have a maximum of 7,000 in the cycle. So they're not going to be able to spend, 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 spend.
There's a limit on the top end?
There's a limit on the top end, yeah. And we would continue to do that. There are exceptions made for specific uses, or specific people who, you know, need to work with a vendor who only takes a P card, so that they release a vehicle when it's done, or something like that. Those are rare.
Other questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As it relates to the process of the requesting and receiving the, the bids, the formal bids, and then the formal proposals, and as it relates to who you're requesting those from, why is it that we would be sort of bifurcating that out by the type of service versus just saying, based on a certain dollar amount, we would be requesting that type of documentation on that purchase?
I suppose you're referring to the fact that some cities say at $50,000, it's formal, and below that, it's not. That could be a very easy recommendation to make. I sort of was keeping in alignment with how people are, you know, used to doing business, staff-wise, as well as, as just talking about $50,000 for goods or services. It just seems as though there are places where it makes sense to have a little more conversation about what are you asking for? And are we really comparing apples to apples as we go? And are you asking for a brand? I mean, there's so many times when purchasing gets involved in those discussions early on to say, you know, you, it would be better to write a specification and not call out a... a brand. But if we don't have that opportunity, we may lose some of that. And when we, I just feel it's important to be able to work with people as they're, you know, developing things and this is one way to, to continue doing that. And I'm really not trying to, to take work off my plate to say that purchasing isn't important. I think it is an important piece of, of what we offer to the community.
Sure. I think that, you know, as it relates to modifying the approval levels, the procurement process and the RFP process and the, the way that the bids come in, we need to just make sure that those processes are airtight, not just in the way that the monies are spent, but also understanding to which entities those dollars are going to as well, so that we don't end up with one entity getting multiple contracts at the same time. And so it's sort of one of those situations where one entity gets five contracts for fifty thousand dollars or somewhere, there, you, we may not be aware of what's going on, but at the end of the day, over several quarters, they end up having several contracts with several different departments and then we, we end up in a situation that's untoward. And at the same time, working with contractors over several year period of time and never taking something out to bid, puts an unfair advantage to other contractors in the same market space to not even have a chance to bid on that given project. So I think we need to be careful about the, just the procurement side of it to say, how do we make sure we're getting the best price possible and also making sure that all of the products and services that we're purchasing have that opportunity or have people, have the opportunity to show us what, what they have to offer us, so that we're not sort of limiting ourselves just by what's convenient. Because I think it can be somewhat convenient for staff to say, oh, I love my Apple or I love my PC, but that may not necessarily be the, the specific necessity at that time and we're maybe missing out on something, so.
If I can comment on that one? I'm sorry. One step in our process is that we do create purchase orders at fifteen thousand dollars. So we will be looking at the three quotes. That'll be a requirement, that the three quotes get turned in. And that we're, you know, then, at least on the backside of that purchasing process, asking those questions of, how many vendors did you ask for quotes from? And what was your response to that? And we'll, we're not going away and we'll be there to help and we do use the Rocky Mountain e-procurement system to post our bids and there's a wonderful resource there of potential bidders. So, you know, that will be highly encouraged to, to have people ask us for a bidder list if they need that help.
Okay, I just, I wanna make sure that we're being mindful of, you know, our, our process here at the city level and knowing that we, in some cases are, can be somewhat, you know, comfortable going back to the same vendor year, you know, year after year or time after time, just because that they have provided great service or they have provided, you know, an excellent product or what have you. But that doesn't mean that we don't have a duty to the marketplace to put it out to bid and, and that's no fault of theirs or no fault to the quality that they're offering, but it's just a duty to the marketplace that we must at least make that opportunity available to others. That's just that opportunity.
And Jenny may wanna speak to that. I mean, that's a requirement of, of our process of purchasing that every service, it's bid out over a cer, after a certain number of years, correct?
Yeah, well, the things that, the things that we bid for terms, and we do have a number of those where we, we recommend that we award for a year and then have an option to renew. Those are looked at with, you know, the, the end users' help. You know, they give us feedback on how, have they provided a good service or, you know, kind of, would you want to continue working with them? Do you recommend that we continue? And it's not assumed that we will continue working with them. I also understand your point about maybe having multiple contracts with one vendor. Again, through that issuing a P O at fifteen thousand, we're gonna see that early, that won't be necessarily five or 10 contracts before somebody's aware of it. It's, you know, you, then it's a point of, have we bumped up against that level, that hundred thousand cumulative level too, you know, to where this now needs formal process going forward. You've let that, maybe the scope got bigger than we anticipated to begin with.
I guess that's my question, is it's not necessarily on the service that's provided, but it's also to the vendor that's being paid. So how do we track both, not just the, the services? So Department A, B, and C only had thirty three thousand dollars worth of services paid to a vendor and then Department D came in and paid him three thousand dollars, now that's over a hundred thousand dollars. So does that go to council then or because they each only paid a small amount?
Well, I, I think if they're, if they're very distinct projects, they, they would, if they stay under the hundred thousand individually, they wouldn't come to council. But I, I think is what Jen is trying to say is, and she has caught this in the past, I think departments occasionally may try to split projects up sometimes to keep them under certain limits because it's easier and purchasing catches that. And, and says, we have a process for that. And, you know, I, it, it's not with any bad will of intent, but it's, like you said, it's the fairness and making sure we're getting the right pricing and, and purchasing catches that when it does happen. It's very small.
And I even count it on the P cards. When it's, you know, two thousand dollars three times, really? Same day? Yeah.
And our auditors too, another check too, I think maybe with Christie's comment earlier is during our annual financial audit, they, they will do a sampling of these different, different things in purchasing and they look at our policies and they say, well, you're not following your policies, why, why do you have this policy in place? So that, that's one other check that we have too, so.
Yeah, how, how, I'm trying to break this up because you keep talking here about projects too. So let me get a couple of things here. Let me start out with envelopes, okay? We have one city envelope with one city logo. Do we take bids on that for the year or, or, you know, all, let's just call it paper goods in general, because if we get letterhead paper and what have you, do, do we, is that a, is that going to be called a project or we, how do we handle that? And let's go to diesel fuel and gas. We've got a tank out at, out at the maintenance yard and we'll have, I don't know how big our tank is, but I'm used to talking in terms of, you know, one tank, 10,000 gallons might last me a, a week in what I used to do. But, you know, we, do we, do we do fuel purchase for the year on annual contracts?
So I can address the fuel. We belong to the MAPO group with, which is multiple association of, multiple authority of procurement or purchasing association. It's, it's not a good, one of those acronyms. Actually been pretty involved in that, I should've been able to spit that out. Apologize to them. And we collectively do cooperative bids and the fuel bid has just been redone by Arapahoe County. Hill Petroleum did win that bid again. So we have, as a city, always used the results of that bid because it is competitive and it's local, to make our purchasing decisions. So then I think it speaks to the budget, what's approved for fuel in the budget and then that's established on a P O for the year. And then they work from that as they need to make purchases.
I, I guess what I'm trying to get straight in my head is probably, and I'm gonna pull a number out of the air, seventy percent of our expenses are what you might call normal and ordinary expenses and that's why I say fuel, tires for the cars, the cleaning service, paper products, pens and papers, our electric bill. What, I'm not sure that what we're doing would affect those issues, would they? Or what, what, I'm just trying to break out, if, if we're doing yearly contracts on seventy percent of our budget, what are we really working on here to increase these spending limits?
We're working on the, the special projects that come through every year. Some of them are those multiple year renewals, so that comes up. But a lot of it is the parks projects and the public works projects and the equipment purchases and it, natural gas, we do compete, but that's a multiple year recommendation to renew. Envelopes, we probably have not in the term that I've been here. We do get quotes.
That's a bad example, but I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out.
So paper, we buy off state bid. We do use a lot of the, the bidding establishments that are already out there, the prices that are set.
So much of this seems like it's covered in the budget already, I'm not sure just what we're trying to approve here because?
Well, it, it is and that, that's kind of in, as Jen mentioned in the memo, a lot of cities don't bring back for a reapproval, as she says. There's a chart, there's quite a few cities, Boulder, Denver, Drango, Fort Collins, Greeley, Lakewood, Longmont, Thornton. If it's already, if it's approved in the budget once, it doesn't come back for the actual purchase to city council. But, you know, we, we understand that, you know, there might be a certain threshold that council maybe wants, wants to still see it and we think a hundred thousand might be kind of that threshold, even though it is budgeted. And, you know, through the budget process, we try to highlight, and Larry, I think you're right, that most of our daily purchases, probably over seventy five percent, are those daily operating expenses, you know, the gas, the electricity, the, you know, stuff like that. So during the budget process and then also through our purchasing process, we wanna make sure that the things that are impactful to the community, that you really need to know about and then the public probably wants, have a little bit more attention about that, you still see those and you still know about those. And so we try to highlight those in the budget process and try not to get into the weeds of, you know, we're, we're buying a thousand envelopes and, so, yeah, I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, but.
You're getting close.
Okay.
I mean, one of the.
Yeah, sure.
I think a good example to share with you, Larry, that I think gets to what you're asking. Most recently at a council meeting, council approved the contract with I M A for our medical brokerage services. And so we budget for medical premiums each year, you know, each year, we have a contract with the option to annually renew that contract with I M A. It's under the hundred thousand dollar threshold. So that would be an example of an item that wouldn't come forward to council in the future, but something that we routinely put in the budget. And so it's taking that, that last step in consolidating the amount of time to negotiate that contract. And, and so that's, that's, I mean, there's dozens of examples in that realm where we have contracts with different vendors.
Thank you.
There's some savings in time as well, since with council meetings, you have to keep planning this contract by this meeting, et cetera, going forward, some of those steps could be unbooked. Mr. Parker?
Thank you for the work on this and I'll be brief. In general, I support this. I see this obviously as covering multiple items. As for cleaning up the P card limits as well as the, uh, purchasing acquisition limits, all of that makes sense to me as cleanup based on kind of market and updating numbers. The only one that obviously is, I think we just talked about, that, that makes a, you know, significant change to us as we see it, would be the items between thirty five thousand and a hundred thousand that are budgeted that we will not see on the dais. And largely, I, I think that's okay. And I understand the intent of this is to try to, to not only clean up and, and create more efficient process where we don't have to always have that worked on. I think there, in the example that was just given, obviously there's a lot of staff time, council time, preparing that, binding it, putting it in the report and us working on it and oftentimes without a lot of conversation, because again, these things have been seen by us in some ways, multiple times through budget process. So I'm okay with this. You know, my only question I suppose is that we need to keep our eye on this as we move forward. I'm sure we'll have more discussion when this comes up, um, in the council packet formally. But I will just say that, you know, numbers in these cases are not always the best metrics to, to make the distinction and so we'll, we'll suffer a little bit. I don't, I don't, I'm not offering a better way of doing it. But obviously, picking a number, a hundred thousand or any other number, you're gonna miss things perhaps. And I think we'll just have to, as we move forward, kind of trusting in this process, we'll have to see how, how it works. But I, I'm, I'm okay with it moving forward as, as it is here and look forward to the conversation at council.
Is that hand up or council just? Mr. Grant?
Should I ask for a consensus? Are we ready?
Please.
Great. I'd like to get a consensus to increase purchasing limits and approval levels. And can I include maybe getting some type of monthly report or something in with that from you, just so that we can kinda see how things are going?
Yeah, I think so, but for clarification, we're passing, is the, the real request is to, to, to move this forward to council, is that correct?
Yeah.
Where, where, you know, if, and so I suppose that if you wanted to add something that may not show up, we'd need to ask staff then.
Yeah, maybe if you could explain a little bit, maybe what kind of report, just a, a list of expenditures that were made below the hundred thousand, between the thirty five and a hundred or something?
Yeah, that would be great, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Great, so consensus?
Do I have a consensus? Where's the answer on consensus? I do? Okay, so we'll go forward with that as this comes.
Next Monday night.
Next Monday night?
Mm-hmm.
Hi, St.
Madam Mayor, if I may just inject, since this will be coming to council again, I would like to see when this comes to council, and that's just to save time for everybody, some rationale on, I mean, this is obviously in almost all these categories, not just an adjustment for inflation. It's hugely above an adjustment for inflation. And at some point in time in 2011, the council thought these were enough dollars for you to have a spending limit on before it came to council. So I'd like to see some justification on why these numbers are way over an adjustment just for inflation.
Beyond what's in the, your memo that we provided for tonight or is there something you think's missing or?
Well, nothing, I'm just saying, city manager was up to thirty five thousand, now it's going to a hundred thousand, that's three X. I don't think we've had three X inflation since 2011. And so I'm not sure why, that's what I would like to know, is why do we need to not just adjust for inflation? That I'm okay with.
But the default inflation, you know?
Yeah, I think Mayor brought up the point of time, which I didn't really dwell on, except that it, there is a time factor to staff and to, you know, preparation of materials, review of materials, your time as well. But also in the purchasing process, the, essentially a two week period where we're preparing the C A F and it goes, you know, through the opportunity for you to review it and then when you approve, and usually by consent, hopefully with, that's a good thing. And then we go back to the vendor to create, you know, the contract and if it's construction, to get their insurance. to get their insurance and bonds and things like that specific to the project. So it does add to the time from the beginning of the procurement process to the end and to when work can actually start. So that was part of the factor as well. And when we bring multiple award recommendations to one meeting, it stacks up a number of things in the same stage of the process at one time. And it's also helpful to me with just being essentially one person doing this level of the work to be able to move along more efficiently by having several things in different phases.
Thank you.
Are you saying it's quite a bit more, I mean, one and a half employees, it's all to handle, it's more efficient?
It's more efficient.
For us as well as the vendors?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's more efficient for our city as well as the vendors.
Yes.
And as you said, one vendor even pulled off when, as far as submitting a bid because of our process.
Correct.
All right. All right. Anything else on that one? Even though we've already given consensus, we'll have an opportunity to talk about it some more at the actual presentation. Now let's go to elected officials' reports. I'll just go left to right around the table. Mr. Urban, do you have anything for us?
No.
Mr. Pond?
I just have something real quick because I won't be at next week's city council meeting. However, there is a renewal Wheat Ridge meeting on September 5th. So I just want to announce that now because I can't announce it on Monday.
Okay.
District 3 is having a listening meeting this Saturday at the rec center at 9:00 AM, 9:30 AM. Is that right? Nine. Nine, as in German, no.
Mr. Matthews?
Not tonight, thank you.
Ms. Wooden?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. First off, Ms. Wooden and I went to the Jefferson County Public Health Communities That Care, CTC, meeting, part of the key leaders committee. CTC is a structured evidence-based community change process that helps prevent problems before they develop by decreasing risk factors and increasing protective factors. We're looking at working with our youth. CTC is funded by the grant money of the education and prevention part of the medical marijuana, not, it's not medical anymore, marijuana cash tax fund. And we've received funding of $1.3 million over the next five years. So it meets, the key leaders meets once a quarter and the community board meeting is once a month. I'll be bringing back some updates about that. Our focus areas are 80033, 80214, 80215, 80226, which includes Wheat Ridge High School, Jefferson High School and Lakewood, and Lakewood High School. So I'll be bringing back some more information on that for you guys. And then also I am happy to announce that the facade plus program with the Wheat Ridge Business District went through our board meeting and has been approved. And we are taking applications up until October 1st. Now, the way we're doing this because we realize that a very large project requires a lot of time to try to get your architect and your plans together and that costs money and not money that you necessarily want to put out in front of you before you know if you're going to get the grant. So if you go onto the Local Works website, there is a quick one-page facade plus program application that you fill out that basically where you describe the project that you would like to do. And then in December, the board will be looking through all the applications and then we will be picking the projects that will be getting funded. So project values, 12,000 up to $20,000 can get a, up to a 50% match with a cap of $10,000. So that'd be a $10,000 grant. $20,000, $20,001, up to $50,000 can get a 33% match up to a cap of $16,500. And anything more than a $50,000 project can get a 25% match up to a cap of $35,000. So I just wanted to let you guys know, if you know of any commercial property owners out there that would like to do some pretty heavy work on their project and would like some free money to help them get that done, then have them get a hold of the Wheat Ridge Business District.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ren?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, let me, I attended the Dr. Cog meeting last week. Give you two pieces of news. Money for the gold line from this year that wasn't used is going to next year, so that is, we will get that train. It is going forward. That's from RTD. And also they look at a planning as what they call, Dr. Cog, they get a certain amount of money for projects that are travel related. And at the beginning of that, they have what they call off the top. So they set aside a certain amount of money that is then spent on projects that cities bring forward. And I noticed among the projects that they're looking for, they're all with strong emphasis on reducing vehicle miles traveled, which means biking or something to do with anything that decreases pollution, basically is what they're trying to do. So it's just of interest to me that our city is looking at that as what we want to accomplish as well as far as our committee that we're working, that's working in our background to bring some energy saving information to us or vehicle miles traveled, reducing that. So we're kind of in good alignment. Okay? Thank you.
I wanted to bring to your attention something that is occurring at the State Liquor Enforcement Division, which I may refer to as LED. Our deputy clerk, Robin Eaton, is, as you know, just a walking encyclopedia of liquor law. And he, he's been participating in a working group at LED. That's over at 20th and Pierce, where, over there where a lot of state stuff is. But one of the rule changes that's being proposed and rule changes don't have to go to the legislature. They just decide what the rules are going to be and that's what the rules are. But one of the rules is to eliminate the ability of certain entities to get a special events permit. And as you know, a special events permit is for nonprofit organizations like local works, schools, you know, there's clubs and people come in all the time and have them. Anyway, when we have our boards and commissions dinner, the notary, rotary comes in and gets a special events permit and then they can sell liquor at the boards and commissions dinner. Special events permit for the carnation festival, things like that. So one of the things that they're proposing at the state level is that these entities would not be allowed to get those special event permits. Any government entities, special districts would be like, the fire department can't have a special event where they sell beer. That's just one example. Any special district or educational-based nonprofits. It's PTAs, band boosters, anybody. If they, they don't allow special events in the schools, but a lot of times on the school grounds and the parking lots, they'll have something and it might involve liquor and the proposal is that those would be just eliminated. You can't have them anymore. And Robin and I really see that as not good. So just wanted to, it's a dramatic change from past ideology. It's interesting and I'm just throwing this in, he didn't write it down here, but they've created the ability for the higher education areas like CU, they can have all kinds of liquor stuff on their campuses that are sponsored by the school. But any PTAs or anything like that can't do that. Now, you're going to ask me a question, I want people to answer it.
Yeah, I'm curious, our green is owned by a school. How does that affect if we have alcohol at the green? It's school ground, school property.
I don't know.
It's allowed today. We have a memorandum of understanding with them that they're okay allowing our events to have it, but I don't know what this proposed change, what that would be.
It's my question. I know the school's been allowing it, but will the liquor licensing or LED board now allow it?
Monica, you have a question?
What are they looking at?
I think that the new rules, and this is only one of the changes, let me tell you, like go in and talk to Robin, he'll just like tell you a bunch of stuff. I think implementation in January, I'm, yeah, I'm not positive about that, but that would be my guess upfront and I'll, if I'm wrong, I'll let you know tomorrow in an email. Christie?
So did they give reasoning to why these changes? I mean, was there something of, I mean, it'd just be curious of why you have such, such a change without some kind of motivation behind the change.
They don't really say. They just do it and...
And then they?
Clerks.
Commission kind of thing.
Yeah, well, the working group makes some recommendations, but the working group is, oh man, I'm going to get in trouble here, I better shut up. Like Robin's on the working group, but there's also, I don't want to say it's weighted with certain entities, but like another thing, they wanted to take away the city's ability to be the one to give the special event permits when we're the ones that do all the work and we can't charge any money for it.
So I guess with that being said, is there a way from a city perspective, we could say, hey, we heard of these changes and, you know?
Write letters.
I mean, I guess that's a thing, do we need to do something as a city to say, hey, we heard about this and we're not quite sure of your rationale of why you were making these changes? Could you help us better understand or we don't support the?
Typically, state agencies, when they're making rule changes, they distribute those amongst all the stakeholders and get feedback and input and I haven't seen anything on this one recently. I don't know if it's going directly to Robin, but we'll look into it further and see, see what impact or what input we can have.
Because you said it doesn't go to the state legislature, they can make this decision on it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But even that, they usually have a fairly extensive public process, I believe they do. I know for the department revenue and motor vehicles, anytime there's a rule change, I'm always getting an email. It's like, hey, there's, you guys need to look at this and I haven't seen this one, so we'll check.
Yeah. Okay. And there's, I just, and I want to say this is the last week you can come and get petitions to run for office. Thank you.
Good night.